Senator Rosen, Representative Foul, I'm a member of the committee. My name is Brent Tweed, I'm the state coordinator for Main Campaign delivery. I'm going to attempt to be brief and just summarize my written testimony. Just wanted to clutch on a couple of points where I've heard arguments against LD 652, and I'm in favor of the bill. I've heard arguments about public safety, big public safety arguments, and how this is going to be detrimental to public safety. I think the facts just don't really bear out that argument. For instance, Vermont has been pointing to as a constitutional carry state, which has never required permit to carry concealed, yet they have consistently the lowest violent crime rate rate in the country. Additionally, constitutional carry has recently been passed in a number of states, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, Wyoming, and just this past Thursday was signed into law in Kansas. And there's really nothing significant to support, to, nothing significant to report in those states as far as any changes in violent crime rates. Another example is in states with the least restrictive gun control laws, violent crime rate is lower than the states with tighter, tighter gun control. In fact, Professor John Law has shown in his book, More Guns, Less Crime, that violent crime rates go down in states liberalize their gun control laws, and that's, and that states with more restrictive gun control laws tend to have higher violent crime rates. The second thing that I've heard most in the arguments against is they say that the right to keep and bear arms is not absolute. And I would just point, I just want to point to the main constitution. It says every citizen has a right to keep and bear arms, and this right should never be questioned. I think we could argue all day about what that doesn't mean, but one thing that it most certainly does mean is that a law by a citizen can carry a handgun concealed or unconcealed without state restriction. I think we talked about why isn't it absolute? It's not absolute in that a private property owner should, should be able to restrict possession of firearms on their own property. And also, you don't have the right, the right to point your firearm in a threatening manner or discharge your firearm at someone, at somebody except in a valid self-defense case. So I think that's where to say the right's not absolutely, absolute, that's, that's really what we need, as opposed to being able to carry concealed or unsealed if you're law-abiding. So in summary, the right to self-defense is an inevitable, natural, and human right. And if one has, has the right to life, then one must have the right to defend his life. And I would just say that getting a permit to carry concealed would be analogous, as we mentioned earlier, to get one to exercise your other rights. So I respectfully request that you vote to support LD 652. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. And now we have another former legislator and my constituent, Sharon Hutchins. Welcome, Sharon.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you for letting me speak today, Chairman Kim, Foul, and members of the committee. I saved you the paper because I didn't bring anything printed, because what I brought with me was my grandson who wanted to speak, so, but I happened to sign that online before he did. But I, I do want to give my appreciations for the number of people, nearly a hundred now, I guess sponsors of this 652, I think it is, the concealed carry. And just how nice it is to see that form of, or that amount of common sense in this building, which sometimes is no easy case, but I, but I am very appreciative of that. I will try to take much less time. One of the things that I think that we might want to take a look at, which has perhaps not so much to do with, with this particular bill, but we talk about violence, especially violence to women, but it could be either way, when someone has a restraint restraining order. It almost seems to me that with a restraining order should come instructions on how to use a weapon for the person that's in danger. I never hear that spoken of, but it just, it seems so that would make sense, that if you still were required a permit, that's the person that needs the permit. And the drinking, naturally. So I will leave you with that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, the second, Mr. Hutchins, come on right up. Welcome.
Thank you, Senator Rosen, Representative Foul, and the members of the committee. I just want to, I have three points. The first point is that gun carrying is a constitutional right, concealed or non-concealed, they argue about that, but it is a right to carry a weapon. I believe it is a right to carry a concealed, some argue about that, but isn't it safer for good people to have a weapon than to have a restriction on a weapon? It seems to me that if a bad guy has a gun, that's only a reason why good guys should have guns. My second point is the domestic violence thing, issue. In Japan, where there is absolutely no guns, it's illegal to own a gun without special permission. In Japan, the suicide rate alone is more than the homicide, suicide, and accidental death in America, according to a 2008 study. It just seems ridiculous to me that people try to ban guns about domestic violence. That seems like one of the things that would stop domestic violence. My third point is just that Maine is a great state, and it has a great outdoor heritage of carrying guns. If you're in the woods, carrying a gun is going to make everything a lot safer, and carrying one concealed on the street is going to make the people around you safer if you're protecting against someone who has a malicious intent with a gun. Thank you.
Can you tell the committee your full name?
Hoyt Hutchins.
Hoyt Hutchins, and how old are you?
I'm 60.
60, thank you. We have, that's all you want to know too? Okay. Thank you, Hoyt, so much. You did a great job.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jeff Bailey. I'm a senior policy analyst for the National Association for Governance. I'm here representing our 4.5 million members nationwide, and specifically our 80,000 members and supporters here in the state of Maine. I'd like to address some things that were mentioned earlier, particularly the canard of the Heller decision. We're often told that the Second Amendment has been declared to not be an absolute right, that it's subject to reasonable restrictions. The problem with saying that something is subject to reasonable restrictions is the idea of reasonable changes. It is a very fluid idea, and really, any restriction that someone comes up with, they're not going to say, "I'm going to suggest something that isn't reasonable." People don't do that. Everyone believes that their own ideas are reasonable, otherwise they wouldn't hold those ideas. What Heller actually says is that the Second Amendment protects the right to keep and bear arms for lawful purposes, including in the home. We seem to miss that fairly frequently. It says "including in the home." Now, in a former life, I was a layman. The fact that they said "including" means that there is something else as well. Lawful purposes don't stop at the front door. Maine already recognizes that by allowing open carry without a permit. All of this law does. It doesn't change who can carry, it doesn't change what they can carry, it doesn't change where they can carry. It only changes how they can carry. It is literally the difference between wearing a coat and not. Oftentimes, with constitutional carry, people are concerned that training will no longer be required. I can give you a training course that will eliminate 100% of negligent discharges in the next 10 seconds. Treat all guns as if they are loaded, even when they're not. Keep your finger off the trigger until you're ready to fire. Know what's in front of and behind your target. Oh, we just eliminated all negligent discharges, because if those three things are followed, the firearms will not go off. Constitutional carry is a very simple idea. It's that people should be able to have their right to defend themselves using firearms, with or without a jacket. It's cold outside today. I put the suit jacket on because my other one was a little bit cold, you know, it was presentable. In my case, I can't carry a concealed firearm in an estate because I'm not a resident of the estate. My permit is not recognized. This law would simply allow people to carry a firearm that they already can carry underneath a jacket. I'm more than happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
So would this law, as a resident, would you be willing to carry it?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you wanted to take the time to write your opinion, especially as it has to do with the way the committee, I'd be glad to read it. If you want to, send it to the committee. Okay.
Oh, President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you see any benefit at all in the training? I mean, you mentioned that we can take 10 seconds and go through it. I mean, we've heard a lot of individuals from police all over the state, sheriffs all over the state, or from individuals that actually run these training programs that are NRA certified, that they actually do see a value in training. Do you see any level of value in having or mandating a firearm safety force?
So you just asked two separate questions, and I would be happy to answer both of them. I see immense value in training. I think that every firearms owner should be trained. I do not believe they should be mandated to be trained. I recommend spending as much money on your training as you did on your firearm. Not all in one class, if you pay that much, you're getting ripped off. But, that said, the government saying you have to have this level of training is dangerous. Because what often happens is, when the government says this is the amount you have to have, people will get that amount and stop. Because, hey, I've been trained to the level that is sufficient according to the government, and they must know what they're doing. Whereas if there isn't a set amount, then the training becomes, there is a culture of training amongst firearms owners. I've taken half a dozen classes, there's at least three dozen more that I'm just waiting to take when I get back home. The, the training becomes a social activity as well as a safety activity. And so when there's not a minimum requirement, there's no longer that economic disincentive from a question of study of choice to stop once you've met that minimum. Lawyers are certified as being minimally required to practice law. And so, they meet those requirements, they meet their continuing education requirements, and very few of them go on to get more training beyond that. When firearms training is not required, training actually goes up. We saw that in Arizona, when they dropped their requirement for a permit, they actually had an increase in the number of permits that were applied for and traded.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I call the next person up, for the people listening in the holding room, make sure 16 through 26 are able to come up in the room to testify, and those that have testified, we need to make room for the new people who are coming. Thank you.
Thank you again.
And Chris is the next one up.
Senator Rosen, Representative Foul, committee members, thank you for hearing me. I had a running bet with Hoyt Hutchinson that I was going to be faster than him. So I would ask you to support LD 652.
We love it. Thank you very much. I didn't even need to start it.
Hello, how are you doing today? I'm yours, myself. I support LD 652. I worked in the Army from 1987 to 1992. I had a lot of firearm training. Myself, I can't carry a concealed weapon because I don't have a concealed weapons permit. I don't carry one myself, but the minute I put my coat on, I become a criminal. I don't think that's right. Why should I have to pay for a permit to do something that I can make with the government? I've heard, and I've been in here today, about domestic violence. I grew up in a household with domestic violence. My mother used to get beat up constantly by my stepfather. When I was 16 years old, I watched my stepson, I thought my mother, my mother, between the house. If there was kind of fire in the house, and I could have got involved, I would have quite stopped it. I could have prevented the beating that my mother did. There's a lot of debate on whether criminals are going to have more access to firearms because we don't have the concealed weapons permit. How many criminals are going to walk down the sidewalk with their guns strapped to the side? Their guns are concealed, they hid behind closed doors, and they're that, because they don't have people in the middle of the car. So the concealed weapon, problem, to me, is kind of a void. I'd just like to think, if I was in place in Aurora, Colorado, and the shooting happened at the movie theater, I'd like to think I could be sitting in that same movie theater, see that guy pulled a gun. Instead of killing all the people that were killed, I'd like to think that maybe if somebody helps in the theater, it's not good enough for that. It can't happen until on that night, because it's basically what they told, I'm not allowed to carry firearms concealed without a permit. Yet if you carry firearms openly, people are calling the police, saying, "Oh, my God, this guy's walking down Main Street with a gun." Police come check me out, they're wasting time, they're wasting their resources to find out if I'm a legal citizen or not. So, that's it, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can't figure out which way to open this. My name is Phil Malletti. I'm a spokesperson for Take America Back. I'm a member of the Constitution Coalition, and I'm one of the three directors to We the People of Maine Inc., a newly formed corporation. As our name suggests, what we do is research. So you may hear something different today. I have a set of constitutions for you to read. All summer long, we gave symposiums from one end of the state to the other, hoping that the one people, or the one group of people that should know the constitution would have came to the symposiums. Unfortunately, there were very few members of the legislature. When you do have the time, turn to page, or sorry, Article 10, Section 6, the very, very last sentence there says very clearly that the Constitution is the law of the state. The second sentence before the end says that the main Constitution will be prefigured as all statutes. And what that means is that all statutes are supposed to be created under the Constitution. So why are we here today talking about unconstitutional law that we already have on the books? So, Eric Brinkley, Phil, and Ricky Long, what they're trying to do is to bring the state statutes up to the Constitution. Does that make sense? Now, I was a range master in the Navy. I was a range master in the Army National Guard in Connecticut, and a range master in the National Guard here in Maine. Would you believe it's easier to teach someone how to use a firearm than to learn how to drive a car? Give me three hours with you, and you will have it. So we're not talking about safety here. If you really think about it closely, it's a person's mentality that you have to work with. But anyway, Article, Article 1, Session 16, very clearly says that we have the right to keep and bear arms, and don't you dare question that. Now, if you don't want to question it, bring us to a court of law and give us some due process. Now, if you notice in my, if I can have my presentation out of there, I'm sorry. If you notice in my presentation, I say very clearly that due process is found in the U.S. Constitution, in the Fifth Amendment, the Sixth Amendment, and the Seventh Amendment. When they created the main Constitution, they just happened to number them the exact same. So if you look tonight in your Constitution, you'll find that if you wanted to take my ride away from keeping and bearing arms, walking down the street without a permit, with a coat on...
Sorry, we've got to go to the next person now. Your time is up. We're doing three minutes.
I'm not even going to thank you for that. This is probably one of the worst presentations I've ever been to. We wait outside for four hours so that we can speak for three minutes.
We had a lot of gun bills today. We're trying to make this fair.
And you would think that you would want to learn about them, too.
My name is Wayne Leach. I'm also a member of the Constitution Coalition. I'm Louenzel. I'm a corporate director and non-commercial resident agent of We the People of Maine Inc., as Phil mentioned, a public benefit nonprofit corporation. According to 13B, MRSA, Section 403, I was going to try to, well, I'll just continue briefly because of time. Although I no longer own or possess firearms, I have in the recent past, and several years ago held a valid concealed carry permit, I thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of LD 652, an act to authorize the carrying of concealed handguns without a permit. I will leave very familiar applause in the name of Mr. Malletti's excellent testimony, which he didn't get a chance to give. I had just made, he wore this, so I prepared mine this way, because I knew I'd be behind him. I was going to address the constitutionality of the bill, which is perfect, and the duty of the honorable members of this committee to hold true to their solemn oath, taking to work for the benefit, safety, and protection of the fundamental rights of the people of Maine. With all due respect to the committee members, to do otherwise would raise the possibility of some, or all of you, to be found in contempt of those very oaths. This is something I am certain nobody would like to have on their record. I fully support the intent in constitutionality and lawful goal of this bill, and urge you to vote to pass it out with an arc to path recommendation to the legislature. That's all I'm going to say. I wish Phil had really got a chance to give you the details of his testimony. I've been here since 2010. I had a serious operation in January, had a tumor removed from my brain. I feel like it's my job to come here and testify. I've been waiting for almost six hours. I'm old. I testified for this length of time.
Thank you for coming. Jack McCarthy?
I hope you read Phil's testimony.
I promise.
Good afternoon. I'm with that. Throughout this hearing, the committee members will hear everything from eloquent to blunt opinions and fact on the quote, "issue 652a." Although I am adamant about the issue, the core issue is not the one in the headline, but truly, the issue that we really need to contemplate is God-given, constitutionally protected rights. Those protected rights, whether enumerated or implied, or incorporated in the documents to which each of you, and many of us, have sworn an oath to protect and defend. There is not an expiration date on any of the oaths to which I personally swore. Therefore, I stand here compelled to defend those documents. Our great Maine State Constitution, which is the law of the land, by the way, in Article 1 declares natural rights. All people are born equally free and independent, have certain natural, inherent, and unalienable rights, among which are those of enjoying, maintaining, life-ability, acquiring, possessing, protecting property, and of pursuing and obtaining safety and happiness. Quotes, those are quotes, that's not my words. Article 1, Section 16, everybody's heard it 20 times already today, keep and bear arms. The issue is, the awkward word is "right" is used twice in one sentence. That's the law. The word "right" is used twice. Washington State Supreme Court Justice Richard Sanders ruled in 1997, "property or rights in a thing consists not merely in its owner's certain possession, but in the unrestricted right of use, enjoyment, and disposal. Anything which destroys any of the elements of property to that extent destroys the property itself. The value, the substantial value of property lies in its use. If the right of use is denied, the value of the property is annihilated, and ownership is rendered a barren right." Use is the key word. Rights may be diminished only by due process, and never be licensed and fee applied to it. Murdoch versus Penn, 1943, "No state shall convert a liberty into a privilege, license it, and attach a fee to it." Sherrillsworth versus Birmingham, 1969, "If the state converts a liberty into a privilege, the citizen can engage in a right with impunity." As you consider the comments today and the future, also keep in mind the constitutional instruction to the legislature, this legislature, on its power to make law. For part, their legislative power, the legislature, with the exceptions herein after stated, shall have full power to make and establish all reasonable laws and regulations for the defense and benefit of the people of this state. It doesn't say corporations, it doesn't say for any business, for the defense and benefit of the people of this state, but it cannot be repugnant to this Constitution nor to that of the United States. If any right can be licensed, then any right can be licensed.
Thank you very much.
I will leave you with this last, this is not Bloomberg City or Al Goreville, this is Maine. We have the right which shall never be questioned. It's the law, not trespassing.
Robert Roy.
Pass, man.
Is it Tollhurst?
Good afternoon. Senator Rosen, Representative Foul, members of the committee. My name is Tom Tollhurst of China. I'm also the president of Gun Owners of Maine, a nonprofit volunteer gun rights organization representing the interests of thousands of our members and gun owners across the state. Today, I'm here to offer testimony of the paper of LD 652, an act to authorize the carrying of concealed weapons with a permit. This bill would implement what was called constitutional carry, a term which describes a statutory framework, which does not restrict the carrying of concealed handguns by law by new citizens. Maine has restricted that right since 1917, instead requiring citizens to obtain the permission of the government to exercise this right. Over time, the permit system has had many requirements and requirements attached to it, including fees, training requirements, background checks, releases of personal information, and so on. Not one of these requirements would stand if they were applied to any other fundamental right, like free speech, or right to travel, or the right to vote. And yet, the right to bear arms, perhaps the most clearly and forcefully articulated right in Maine's Declaration of Rights, is burdened with these requirements. Some will warn that a permit system is necessary in order to ensure that criminals do not carry concealed handguns, but as you've had heard countless times today, and will continue to hear, criminals do not apply for permits, they simply carry illegally. That's what criminals do. That's what criminals do. Some will say the training requirement is needed to prevent tragic accidents. But this overlooks the fact that Maine has never required any permit for open carry of handguns, and there has been no epidemic of tragedies associated with that unregulated mode of carry. In point of fact, Maine requires a permit not to carry a handgun, but as you've heard, in order to wear a jacket. No logic can be explained why an open carry requires no background check, no training, no fees, and no government permission slot, while the same person wearing a windbreaker does. Five states have passed constitutional carry between 12 years ago and last week: Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, Kansas, and Wyoming. Our own New England neighbor Vermont has never restricted concealed carry in the state's history. Indeed, constitutional carry used to be known as Vermont carry. These states stand as a testament to practicality and safety of constitutional carry. Wherever constitutional carry has been proposed, higher warnings of horrific consequences have been pronounced by opponents, as you've heard here today. But in reality, this experiment has been run many times, and these predictions have always proved false. One need to confirm that Vermont, whose experience with constitutional carry reaches back over two centuries, to see this. Mainers deserve the same freedom and trust enjoyed by Alaskans, Arizonans, Arkansans, Kansans, Wyomingans, and Vermonters. I urge this committee to support LD 652 and report it out as opt-to-pass. To do otherwise would be to disparage the citizens of our state and suggest that they are less responsible and trustworthy than freer Americans in Vermont, Kansas. I would not wish to be the legislator who drafts that law. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Senator Wilson, thank you very much. Mr. Travers?
Senator Rosen, Representative Paul, and members of the committee, my name is Michael Travers. I'm from Minnetonka. I'm speaking in support of LD 652, but my testimony would be germane to any gun legislation you might be considering. There's always the usual suspects, and always the usual arguments. Blood will run in the street, we'll become like the Wild West. People will be shooting each other over traffic gas. Police will be in danger from a bloodthirsty citizenry. People aren't competent to defend themselves and should leave it to the police. Of course, they're wrong, demonstrably wrong, and they get proven wrong every time. You'd think they'd get embarrassed, but no, they're at every hearing. No amount of proof will dissuade them, and only hope our legislators will make fact-based decisions instead of emotional ones. The usual suspects would have you believe that the people you represent are careless fools, prone to anger, and far too irresponsible to be trusted with guns for their own defense. They'll ignore our sister state, Vermont, and their experience with trusting their citizens to carry concealed. Apparently, Vermont citizens are a superior breed when compared with Mainers. Many people will testify today, many statements will be repeated, so I'll spare everyone of lengthy recitation. My only hope is that you, the legislature, will be as offended as I at the insulting testimony you aired today, the implication that your fellow Mainers are dangerous fools that can't be trusted. Thank you.
Before I ask the next person to come up, but we have, for those listening in the holding room, numbers 24 through 34, come in please. And then those that have already testified. 27 through 39, you can come in. There's room for everybody. Alex? Alex?
We've already got you signed in.
We've already got you, but thank you.
All right. Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry. My name is Alex Dickman, and I rise today for myself, my wife Hillary, and our four-year comitmen vote in support of LD 652. But before I share our thoughts, we want to publicly thank our representative, Representative Warren, who has supported the bill. I would like to share a quote from a great man recently resurrected in our current political arena. "An idea whose time has come cannot be stopped by any army or any government." Let me repeat that. "An idea whose time has come cannot be stopped by any army or any government." In regards to the Second Amendment, the idea that the Constitution is our permit has come. The idea has been around since the writing of the Constitution, but a fire was lit a couple years ago, and has grown and spread like a wildfire, that now it cannot be stopped. The citizens of Maine want to do away with permit requirement to exercise their basic constitutional right, and they want to exercise it unhindered from the government interference or seeking permission. We, my family, share this desire. The man who took the quote from, the man who took the quote from, from a famous French poet, writer, and romantic of the 1800s, certainly we heard of Victor Hugo. Victor was a royalist, but as his life developed, he became an avid supporter of republicanism for the ideology of governing a society, state as a republic, where the governors are representatives of the people, rather than the public, rather than the people being subjects of the head of state, in a republic, as we are. Your job as a representative of the people is to govern how the citizens want you to govern, not subject them to your personal views or the special interest groups, like the kings of all did. The people of Maine have clearly shown...